Well, now, kind of the December 5th, 2019 Hawkins County Board of Education meeting is over. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. And before we get out of here, I'm gonna go ahead and say I wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and safe holidays. At this time, I'd like for us all to stand and have a moment. And now, Mr. Trapp, ladies and gentlemen, please.
She's gonna answer her phone first.
Attention, salute, play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now, please, do you want us to plead us in the conflict of interest that we're facing, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, those of you that acknowledge you have a personal and are an indirect conflict of interest, do you acknowledge that conflict of interest for all actions and purposes of this meeting? And do you further acknowledge that all your votes will be in the best interest of the school system?
I did, as the record reflect, that I'll have on both contexts.
I'll ask now the superintendent of schools if anyone has signed up for any public comments of agenda items.
Will sir.
And we do not. It is now before the board for approval of the minutes for the November 12, 2019 board meeting.
No moves.
We have a motion.
Thank you.
We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? With no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none opposed, motion passes. It's before the board now to approve the outline and format of this agenda.
Sir.
But a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? With none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none opposed, motion passes. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to our Director of Schools, Mr. Hickson, for recognition.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christian. At this point, I would like Ms. Teresa Drennan to come up for our first recognition of the evening.
Director Hickson has asked that I come and share some exciting news with you guys tonight. The, um, in October, the U-Trust trustees met to consider the return on investments, and based on that information, they've determined what funds, if any, would be dedicated to mini-grants for the participating school systems. I'm happy to inform the board that our school district will be receiving $61,300 this year. The intent of the mini-grants is to provide a little money to make a big difference directly to our students and employees. These funds will be available for our teachers to apply for competitive projects and materials, for professional development, and for staff appreciation across the county. So, some great news. Thank you.
For our second recognition this evening, I would like Mandy Kinner, Director of School Nutrition, to make her way forward at this point.
Good evening. Mr. Hickson, um, asked me to share some more good news with you. Um, in October, the State Office of Nutrition offered, um, alternative breakfast mini-grants. And so, we applied for five schools. And what this is, is, um, the state would, would want to award funds for these mini-grants in order to provide equipment, supplies, technology, or marketing assistance to school food authorities or our nutrition programs that participate in the national school lunch and breakfast programs, um, that would seek to expand or create an alternative breakfast model, um, at particular schools. And these funds would allow us to purchase needed resources to expand those programs, excuse me, by implementing models such as breakfast in a classroom, second chance breakfast or break and go. Now, we already had a lot of schools doing this, but there were some schools that, um, really showed an interest in, um, ramping up their, their efforts. So, um, we know that breakfast is really important, and give you, just give you a couple of statistics. Um, kids who eat breakfast, uh, eat school breakfast, attend 1.5 more days of school, and are 20% more likely to graduate high school. So, that's encouraging. Uh, students who eat, uh, school breakfast exhibit less off-task behavior and are less likely to miss class, uh, by being in the principal's office or nurse's office. And we have already seen some, some good, some good, um, things happening in those areas. And kids who eat school breakfast score 17% higher on academic tests. So, that's very encouraging information. So, I'm pleased to announce that Churchill Intermediate School received $5,000. Churchill Middle School received $3,300. Hawkins Elementary and Superior School Elementary each received $2,500 to, um, further their efforts for breakfast. So, more people. Thank you.
And all the recognition is, is it? Okay. Delegations, do we have a representative from HCEA? If not, uh, we have a tentative meeting date for January the 7th of 2020. Uh, how does that date work for, oats on the teeth?
Good.
Anywhere the second? I think we could go ahead and schedule that. We have anyone from the Education Committee of the Hawkins County Commission? If not, Mr. Hickson, um, reports, please.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. I would like to start with our student board representative from Volunteer High School. I'm sorry, Clinch High School. And I knew that because she emailed me and she, she apologized for not making it, but as you all know, we have implemented a four-day school week over there because the roads have been closed. I just heard tonight that, that possibly are open next, so we're excited about that. But we're, we're excited to have Hannah Lamb here to give the report this evening.
So, at Clinch, there's the mini-grants that have happened in November and are going to happen this month. Um, November the 18th, the 22nd, our grade second directed their case assessments. Um, the 23rd, we had our math family engagement night, and our sophomores and juniors took a trip to ETSU that day into a campus store. This month, we have our Christmas plan on December the 12th. And on December the 14th, we're also having our literacy family engagement night. And then, on December the 17th, Mission of Hope is coming to give, give us the students. And on December the 5th, K-25 will be doing, um, mentorship, and they'll also be participating in dental hygiene classes.
This is Teresa Drennan again, if you wouldn't mind coming back up for reports. So, I asked Teresa to come back up on the, on the reports to talk a little bit about, um, background check reimbursement proposal that we're, we're recommending before the board. Uh, as you know, TCA, Tennessee Code annotated, annotated mandates now that all school employees having proximity to children are required to compete, complete a background check prior to employment every five years after initial employment. So, in order to make sure that we meet that mandate across the board 100%, we are proposing that we assist and pay for those for our employees once, once they're hired and once they're in the system. That cost, uh, I'll have Teresa break down that cost for you, but, uh, other counties, um, offer this type of reimbursement for their employees. It's a perk for employment. It's something that we can help offset as far as, uh, their necessary costs to maintain not only the legal ramifications or requirements for teaching and working around kids, but also, uh, to help offset some of the licensing and other things they're responsible for as well.
I think you have this proposal in your packet. Um, do you have any questions about the breakdown on the reimbursement? We are asking for, um, our employees' initial costs would be paid by them. Um, if we feel that that is fair across the board, we request that all new employees to be, to be, um, to, to pay for that initial background check. But then, each five years, every five years, when they're required to go back, we feel like it would be reasonable and fair to reimburse our employees to have to go through that process for the cost of that. It's $35.15 that they have to do, they have to pay each time. Currently, our employees are having to go to, um, I think Moorestown has a location, Ringel has a location, Sullivan County now has a location, and we've also looked into possibly becoming a site ourselves here in the county. Uh, we, we were not, um, able to be eligible for that, though. We have, we have checked into that. Um, we would still have to pay for the background checks. It would just provide a little bit of, of, um, a little bit of, of, employees not having to go get it, you know, in another location. It would just be a convenience thing for them. But, um, we're not eligible for that part, but, uh, we would ask that the board consider reimbursing our employees. Um, the breakdown over five years, if we look at the numbers of, of our employees that need to have this done, uh, this year, we're looking at around $17,000 if, if every employee that needed to have that completed, had that completed. Um, we have been working since 2018 to get all employees background check because many employees were hired before the year where it was required. So, we had to go back and pick up those employees first and get everyone background checked. So, now, we're, we're getting into the cycle of repeating it every five years.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
So, if we approved this tonight, you're gonna go back in 2019 and reimburse our teachers?
We haven't started this, the five-year cycle yet, um, and so, this would be for, if we've had any that have completed it in the, in the last five years, we do have some ten, um, free-to-be-ready folks that had to have their backgrounds updated and some special ed folks. So, if you, you know, consider doing that, I think that would be reasonable.
How would that change your number?
Not dramatically. It's, um, it would be a drastic change. Um, I would say probably maybe add 25 employees to that.
Now, would this include non-faculties staff also?
It, it's all employees that have proximity to students. So, it, it's all employees that, um, you know, proximity, um, you mean, are you talking about coaches? So, that, that would include coaches if they were every five years.
Okay.
If they were employed at the same time.
What if, I hate to ask this question. What if we have an employee not pass a background check? Do we still reimburse them for that?
We have to, Mr. Hickson.
I think, I think on base value, another set of circumstances and procedures kick in at that point.
Okay.
But, uh, the, the cost of the test would be the least of our concern if we had employee that, for whatever reason, did not pass that background check and was unable to be employed. If you wanted an answer directly tonight, I would say we could go ahead and pay that background check price and then move forward with the procedures we needed to perform.
Thank you.
Teresa.
Yes.
Does this include, like, coaches that are not actual employees? Do we do those too?
Non-faculties.
Non-faculties coaches?
We get those too. Get their employee for a successive life of career.
Just so we, we get the record straight, the initial background check is paid by the employee.
By the employee, yes.
And then, this would just kick in after five years, correct?
Yes.
And every five years after that, if they're successfully employed.
I have a question as well. Do we have an estimate of, like, of retired or resigned approximate number that that may impact, and it would be impacted this year, 2019?
Well, in order to have those numbers, those would have had to turn in the paperwork to do so.
Right.
And, you know, it's, it's kind of early in the year.
Early.
We could split that, that amount out. Um, but that initial one is going to be pretty high this year, so we could, um, go back to the, to the oldest backgrounds first and then, um, catch up the next year on the others. So...
But these are already made, if those four are the ones that they need.
Yes. So, would be a recurring cost this year to get everyone caught up, this one would be the most?
And it'll probably be a different division after that.
I think we would probably just need to maintain that, that account each year, add two if, if we need to.
But it's on the, it's on the, yes, it's reports. We shouldn't maybe run a big, uh, order.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Hickson.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
Ms. Tammy Gibson, Special Education Assistant Director, please come forward at this time.
Hi, I'm filling in for Angela tonight, who can be here. Um, I'm coming to you tonight to highlight a new pilot program that we're proposing to start in January. It's called the Hand in Hand Preschool Program. We're going to be meeting today at Joseph Rogers, um, Primary. And what it is, is an inclusive preschool program offered for our students. And the reason why we're doing this is because we got a letter from the State Department saying that we didn't quite meet the, the criteria that they have set for us, the target information that they have set for us in this area. Now, this has always been a problem, um, for us in special education, even not just us, but the surrounding counties have had problems with this too, finding opportunities to educate our students with disabilities alongside those without disabilities. So, this, um, program that we have here, um, is called the Hand in Hand Preschool Program, and it is an inclusionary program that would have an enrollment of 16 students, um, with at least 50% of those students being regular education students without IEPs. Um, we have been taking applications for this program, and we have, um, 10 people, 10 students that are eagerly awaiting the start of this program. And I have given you some information on there. The first information that I gave you is the report that we had to submit in E-Plan outlining our steps to address this issue that we're, that we're looking at. Um, there are action steps to which we've been working on, uh, collaborating with Volunteer Pre-K and the Head Start to look at other opportunities to include our students. Um, we have developed an LRE, um, checklist for us to use at our IEP meetings to look at the regular classroom as our first option of service for our students. And also, um, the Hand in Hand Program, the pilot program, is one of the action steps that we outlined in the, in the proposal as well. So, um, we have Carrie Muncie, who is going to be the teacher of that program. Um, as we were planning for this program, we were hoping to do it at JRP and also at Mount Carmel. That's where we house our two, um, classrooms for students with disabilities. But, um, we found out in looking at this that the teacher that, teachers in that setting has to be dual-certified, regular ed and special ed. So, Carrie was one that, um, did have that certification, so we're gonna pilot that program there at Joseph Rogers just to see how it will work. We're hoping that we can continue this project, um, in future years and looking at ways to address this issue. Um, we also, um, consult with our coordinator, our 619 coordinator, Holly Haydock, to make sure that we're following regulations and doing everything that we need to, to address this, this effort. Um, we have, I've been looking at data throughout the school year to see how we're improving in this area. And, um, as you can see in the information that I provided, we were at 10.34% when looking at this, um, when we submitted this in E-Plan. And if our numbers are right, we're right at 31% now. So, we have made gains in this area, and we're hoping that our efforts, um, can be shown in the data that's submitted to the State Department. And I can see that we're working toward moving these type targets that they proposed. Do you have any questions for Ms. Carrie? I brought her along tonight just so that she can answer questions specific to the program.
Thank you.
Mr. Christian is aboard. Uh, last month, I did state that we were gonna have Byron Booker come back, Assistant Principal overseeing CTE at, at Cherokee High School, to talk about, uh, a grant that we were rewarded and, uh, that we had to implement spending on, if you remember. And he was unable to come last month. He is here this evening to, uh, to give an overview of that spending plan for those dollars. Uh, with him is Brandon Williams, our CTE director.
Good evening. Uh, I'm just going to go up here and introduce Byron to you, but before I do, I want to take just a moment to brag on him for a minute. Byron is the CTE principal at Cherokee High School, and he's one of the hardest-working individuals I know. He's very, very good at his job. And so, Byron just wanted to say thank you and congratulations on your efforts for this grant. Uh, we really appreciate all that you do for CTE and for the school district overall. And I'll turn it over to you now.
Thanks. Thank you.
Good evening. I have a presentation. I'll direct your eyes upward, if I can find it.
The grants are computer programming.
All right. Thank you, Lee. We are in business. Get to the presentation. How about from the beginning? There we are. Good evening. Uh, as I said, Byron Booker, I served as Assistant Principal for Career Technical Education at Cherokee High School. Uh, this was actually prior to Brandon coming on board as our supervisor for CTE. Thomas Floyd had contacted me and said we had an opportunity to apply for a SPARC grant. And so, let me walk you through, uh, what that is and, and how we were awarded those monies. SPARC grant is sponsored by the Tennessee Higher Education Commission. Um, really, three, uh, steps to that process. Uh, acquire an equipment to expand opportunities within CTE, creating dual enrollment partnerships, and, uh, a new focus is expanding learning for adult learners within your community. Uh, and so, we took that notion, and we were awarded $35,921 to spend for, uh, for those three areas of focus. The first opportunity we had was for the establishment of a nursing skills lab at Cherokee High School. Uh, it consumed a, a good bulk of that, of that grant money. You can see there, $25,421. You can see the items we were able to purchase. A little backstory on that is the nursing skills lab is actually in Phase Two. Uh, Shannon Glass and his maintenance guys helped us out, uh, summer before last, and began to implement and create, uh, a new nursing skills lab. Um, we kind of used what we had, uh, available, but this grant is going to, uh, is really going to expedite the process. We now can meet the criteria for DNS diversified technologies. What that does is it will enable us to become a testing site for the CNA program. Uh, and, and this is a game changer, folks. Let me explain why. What's the significance of testing at your own site? This past, uh, fall semester, we were able to bring back home, uh, one of our own, Amy Britton-Jeffers, uh, to serve as the new health science instructor. She had been previously teaching in, uh, the Moorestown-Hamblin school system, and from her experience, uh, in this program, is there's an increase of 25 to 30% pass rate on the CNA when students have the opportunity to test at their own location. Uh, to me, that's a game changer for a lot of folks, and so, we're really grateful for that opportunity. Second opportunity we had was within our architectural and engineering design program. Um, the Solid Works, uh, as it's known in, in industry certification, 3000, will cover a subscription service, a software package, and we're going to be able to provide, uh, 100 Hawkins County school, high school students, the opportunity to earn their Solid Works industry certification and covering this. This will then lead into the second step, which is going to initiate a dual enrollment partnership, uh, within the AED program. Uh, and we're, we're looking and talking with Walter State about that, and then hopefully, uh, next summer, establishing some work-based learning opportunities for students who have earned this industry certification. The third opportunity is within OSHA-10 training. Uh, $30,000 was able to cover the training program materials and the assessment, uh, for that particular industry certification. The state of Tennessee, within the last year, has expanded OSHA-10 as a certification from two programs of study to five programs of study, and we anticipate, uh, in the coming years, uh, perhaps that expanding to even more programs of study within CTE. Uh, so, we're now going to be able to provide 140 students, uh, from Hawkins County, an opportunity to earn their OSHA-10 industry certification and cover the cost of that for them. With that said, I do want to stop there. Um, the, the OSHA-10 is an expanding certification. Anyone familiar with industry knows, uh, safety has to come first. And so, the idea was, could we save ourselves money in the long term by providing our own training and our own assessment? So, we've allocated $4,000 within that grant money for OSHA-10 trainer courses, and we're going to attempt to certify for Hawkins County school CTE teachers to train and test our students in the years to come. Uh, and then, uh, in turn... And then in turn, that third focus, being able to expand that for adult learners within the community of Hawkins County. Any questions, comments on that grant?
I think it's fantastic what you said.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely fantastic.
Thank you. We hope to have the opportunity to apply for this grant perhaps next year and already beginning to process and brainstorm the ideas of how we may be able to get the best bang for our buck, so to speak, in expanding those opportunities for our CTE students here in Hawkins. Thank you. Thank you for the invitation. I do have two more items that I wanted to share with you in addition to the grant. And the reason I wanted to share is that you've been doing this for the last few months. But about a year ago, we took the opportunity to create a Cherokee CTE design competition. We collaborated with our AED program, which we're servicing through the grant. We had forty entries, three rounds of voting, ended up in a two-way tie. And so we have selected two design logos for Cherokee CTE. And I just wanted the chance to brag on these students and be able to share that with the board tonight. Roy McPlantahan and Cameron Sills were the two guys who were in info tech and architecture and engineering design. This is our first design for Cherokee CTE is our design logo. And this is our second. Each of the icons within the feathers of the head and rest represented program of study that we offer in CTE at Cherokee High School.
Was that done on the Solid Works program?
I'm sorry?
Was that done with the Solid Builders program?
It was not. We did not have that available at that time. So I invite you to stop by sometime. You can follow me on Twitter. You can call, you can text, or arrange a meeting. Come by and see the great things that our teachers and students are doing at Cherokee High School. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now Brandon, come up at this time again. Mr. Brandon Williams, and introduce engineers from Madder and Craig to speak about the Clinch Well, Clinch School Well Project.
As Jason Fordy comes up, are we getting those types of programs at Volunteer, CTE?
Very similar. They're not identical from school to school, but there is a parallel between the two CTE programs offered in the high schools.
Have Volunteers that applied for the money yet?
They have the opportunity to apply for those same grants. And depending on the application process, schools are awarded or not awarded. Cherokee was awarded this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hixley, could I address that?
I'm sorry. Thank you for the opportunity to address your question. And I should have done a better job explaining. Part of what you just saw will actually be shared between Volunteer and Cherokee High School. So the Solid Works, we have one hundred seats. We're going to give fifty of those to Volunteer High School, fifty of those for Cherokee High School. The nursing skills lab was specific to Cherokee. Volunteer already has one, and so now we're going to be able to do the same. So we tried to share some of that money, even though it was a grant awarded to us. If we win and they win, we all win. Thank you.
I'd like to see cooperation. I do.
That was a better diplomatic answer.
Couple of months back, we had a workshop and discussed with you a need for a backup well system at Quirky. And it's been on the agenda for some time now, but there's been some ongoing requests for information. We've got Jason Snapp with Madder and Craig here tonight. He's going to walk you through a couple of proposals. Basically, what we're asking you board is to approve for us to partner with Madder and Craig to turn it over to them and let them design this project, bid the project, administer the construction of the project. And he's going to walk you through the options here. These are not options that are final. It's just kind of to give you an idea of the cost of the project. Jason.
Good evening, everybody. As Brandon said, I'm Jason Snapp with Madder and Craig. Great to meet all of y'all. And I think most people have got a packet of information we got. And as Brandon said, a couple of months ago, he contacted us and wanted us to look at some preliminary calls on water filtration systems of the Clinch School. From our understanding, after meeting Brandon on site, there's some, I guess, reliability issues with that water filtration system. Being that Clinch School is sort of secluded, it's a pretty major issue when that system's down. So the two proposals that we've looked at are both redundant, both have redundant water filtration systems in them. So it also has an emergency backup generator and some building additions. And it's more or less a complete upgrade of the well system, the well, not the well system, I'll say the filtration system, the building, and power requirements. So if the power was out over there, basically the generator would kick on and keep the filtration system going. If one of the filtration systems goes down, there's a redundant one sitting right next to it to allow it to keep functioning. And obviously, you wouldn't have to close school or whatever the case may be. So sort of the way we've looked at these, I've tried to break it up a little bit so everybody can see what's going on here. We've got it broke into the building, water filtration system, backup generator, there's probably a little bit of fencing that would have to be put in there, existing equipment demo and mobilization. So that's the meat of the construction. There's two options here. One of them I say is the Cadillac option, and one of them is the option that will get it done. And more or less, the Cadillac system is the first one. It's a Tonka vertical pressure filter system. And the differences in this one and the US water system is it's just a more robust system. It's got carbon steel tanks, it's got a more vigorous backwash, it's just the controls are easier. You've got basically touchscreen set of controls that you can do anything you need to for the water filtration system with this specific Tonka system. So essentially, you can push buttons here and change anything you need very easily. And the lifespan of it is drastically greater than the US water system. With the Tonka system, you're probably looking at thirty-ish years, something like that. With the US water system, you're looking at probably eight, ten, twelve years or something like that. So you're looking at about three times the lifespan. And really, the only difference in the two cost estimates that you all have are the water filtration systems. The way we arrived at these costs is without design, the best way to get cost estimates on this type of stuff is basically to reach out to the supplier and say, hey, you guys put these things in every day, what can you give us a turnkey system for? So they've done that with the US water filtration system and the Tonka filtration system. The Tonka one is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the US water is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. But again, that is just a package filtration system. So you can see down here at the bottom of these cost estimates, we've got four hundred and twelve thousand dollars for the Tonka system, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the US water filtration system. So really, the only difference in those costs is just the filtration system. Everything else is really easy. There is a possibility for some cost savings on these numbers, but at this stage, we're preliminary, so we can't really quantify that. When you got out there and got the design of the system, there are a possibility it could fit in the existing building, but I don't want to say that right now. You know, I want to give you our best stat of a worst-case scenario, and that's what these numbers really are. So like I said, you've got two options. The, I guess, the cheaper option is two seventy-five. The more robust Cadillac system is four twelve. And like I said, if Clinch Schools want to be there for thirty or forty years, you know, I would recommend the more robust system just for maintenance issues. You know, your operators will have easier time doing the backwashing and stuff, your media's going to last longer, any of your filters with that system just because of the more vigorous backwash. And it's just an easier system to deal with, I'll say. And there is a, here's the actual proposal from the supplier that sort of lays out a little bit of stuff about each one. There is a brochure for the Tonka system. This is actually one that was just completed in Chattanooga. So this is very similar to what the Tonka system that you guys will be getting if you move forward with it would be. Apologize, I didn't have a picture of the US water system. It looks fairly similar to that, except, like I said, this one has metal tanks. The US water filter system has a fiberglass reinforced plastic tank and, you know, some other nuances that aren't as quality as the Tonka system. If anybody's got any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, best I can.
This is pertaining just to the filtration system, not the pump or anything?
That's correct. Yes, this proposal does assume that the well system itself is in good working order. There are power requirements there that we would need, which I do believe there are. So it's just the filtration system. And then the backup generator, though, it would be tied in most likely to the well system, you know, so you would have that available there too. Basically, it would run that whole well system, the wellhouse and filtration system.
When I asked this question, there was some discussion about the backup well. Would this be for the backup well and we would have the cost of that well to install?
This does not include anything with a backup well. This is just strictly the filtration system.
Replace our current system.
Correct. Yep. The current system would be completely taken out. There would be essentially two new systems put in. That way we would have redundancy.
We don't actually need a second well.
That number includes the two systems.
Oh, this includes the two systems.
I think there was, I think there was some confusion on the fact that we weren't drilling or tapping into the well. We were looking at a redundant system to where the first pump were to go out or the ability to pump water was to go out or we lose electricity. We had redundant systems to supply water and electricity to the school.
No, no. Not the pump.
Not the pump, just to the, just to the ability to pump the water.
Yeah, if the, because the pump would be tied in with the new generator.
Right now, if we lose, if we lose power to the school side, we can't pump water. So we have to, in those cases, shut down the school.
If we didn't have power, we'd shut the school down anyway.
Well, we, if it was, if it was an emergency and we had a shelter in place due to a disaster or weather, inclement weather situation, and it was deemed safer to stay inside a building, we would feel better about doing that if we at least had water. And this would supply the water for washing hands or fixing wounds and that type of thing if given in a disaster. Whereas right now, if we lose electricity right now, we have no water or electricity.
We're going to lose those at other schools, though, too, Ron, without, if the electricity closed.
Clinch, Clinch is the only school that is on a well. It's the only one that requires electricity to get water to it.
The assessment does not include taking the old system out.
It does.
It doesn't include that.
It includes taking the old filter system out and replacing it with a new system that has two separate filtration tanks in it.
Is there any value to the old system?
It's in working order now, but from my understanding, it's not very reliable. I would say no, probably not.
What do you mean, it's not reliable?
I'll have to let Brandon elaborate on that.
We've had issues with that system for some time now. A lot of the issues revolve around the control system that, excuse me, operates that well. It's a program of biological bias, pretty complicated little piece of machinery. Lidges pretty regularly. We have taken steps to reduce how often that happens, but it does still happen on a pretty regular basis. One of the real issues with the Lidge well site there is the electricity issue. Clinch is the only school we have that is served by Powell Valley Electric. And at that point, or in that area where Powell Valley Electric services are, you get a lot of spikes in what we call dirty power, essentially. And it really causes trouble for DLC devices like this one. So if we get a power spike every now and then, it's going to cause this machine to go off, offline, and we may have our students show up again. We've got a perfectly, the machine is perfectly capable of functioning, but it's set there all weekend and not running, and we have no fresh water for the students. It's also at the point now that the media that actually filters the water need to be replaced. So it's a good time to be doing this.
Historically, about twenty-four months ago, we met with Sneakwell Water District and also the Appalachian Regional Commission looking for, seeking some grant opportunities. And we found out that Clinch is about six miles from the Sneakwell Water District. And they were surveying that community to see how many residents would be interested in tapping on. We didn't get much positive movement from the Appalachian Regional Commission. Sneakwell was interested in providing water to us, utility, public water. And I think the ask went at that time was around six million dollars to get a line out there to the school. And we're talking about at least a half a million dollars today for a well system, still yet.
Well, not necessarily half a million, but if you do go with the more robust system, yeah, half a million dollars. But it's a thirty to forty-year solution. I think it's, it's not a bad option.
Is it something to piggyback off of Mr. Markins? Is it something that, given the fact in the future that if we were to get on the city water and that, or supplied water versus the well, is this something that we could maintain if you can, as a backup system?
Absolutely, yeah.
Is this the final cost, Brandon, or is there going to be like extra?
This is just, this is just.
I mean, this is an estimate, I get that, that like, you know, the estimate of the future cost that we might incur if we go this route, is it going to go up significantly?
Yeah, the operational cost.
Yes, yes.
I don't feel that the operational cost would go up very much. I mean, this number here gives you a number to, basically what happens, we would design it, get the Hawkins County School Board a bid package that you all could take out, it would be procurement and all that kind of stuff. You could bid it out, contractor bid and put it in, and you would have a functioning filter system.
Now, I think what the question is, moving forward, let's say you guys put this in.
Yeah.
What's it going to cost us to change the media, get the software upgrades, maintain just the general maintenance of the generator and the system and all that?
I don't think that would be any more than it is now with the existing system.
What is it now, just about part?
I'm not sure that I can even answer that.
Yeah, I will have to do some more research to.
I can tell you, I can tell you with our current system, the media, the current system using is, is probably a little bit overkill for what we actually need. So those need to be changed, and they do, too. It's pretty costly, but as far as an actual figure, I don't have that, and I'm sorry.
I'd like to just interject this. A number of years ago, we had to change the septic system at Cherokee High School. Came up pretty quick, and that system was in bad shape. But anytime that we're going to throw a lot of money at something, and I use that term loosely, these things have to be done. But if we can get a long-term, permanent fix, we're better off in the long run. Let's say this is a half a million dollar project. And yet, we did talk with the water district over there, and maybe if we said, hey, partner up with some other agencies and see if we couldn't make, let's just explore that. Because the sewer project at Cherokee, there was a lot of interest, but time, we didn't feel like we had enough time to run the sanitary sewer across QB Day Bridge. But in the loan aspect of that, we spent nine hundred thousand dollars on that project out there. And if we could have got a sanitary sewer system partnering with the city of Rogers Bowl, maybe the state of Tennessee, we would have opened that whole area to development with the sanitary sewer system, not only for residential. Not only for residential, commercial development, but also the same plan would have utilized that. So I just wonder if it would be possible just to ask the question to these agencies to say, if the school system were to partner up and not guarantee, not give an exact amount of money, but we're getting ready to spend this, what would be the harm in asking if we're kicking in at least this? Would it be considerable to run a water line?
Well, I think one of the missing partners is the county commission. It represents those people out there in that community too. So there would be nothing wrong for us to approach them and ask them to help us if we were to run this line. If we were gonna invest a half a million and they invested half a million, then that would be a good down payment. And then, you know, we could get a loan over twenty years.
Well, no, I'm talking about, there's grants from, and the state of Tennessee for point one.
That's kind of where we went with that and kind of ran into a brick wall and kind of left that and didn't get much interest shown. But there's nothing to say we can't do it again.
Oh, yeah.
And get all the players at the table. But I, I'm kind of thinking along the lines too is, is get a permanent fix. That school's gonna be there probably forever. So rather than talking about eight or ten years and do it again, twenty years, do it again. I would like to see it fixed, bring clean public water out there to the community and, and our school system. And let's get off the well.
If, if we could, if it's, if the board would like to do that, let's just explore that. Just make some bank calls and see what the interest is. And then maybe take this up to anywhere in February. What's the board's direction? You guys just wanna go ahead and, cause it's on the consent agenda.
I guess I would be making a motion to ask Mr. Hickson, since he's got so much free time, to talk with Mayor Lee and see what we could do in terms of sitting down at the table and have a further discussion before we vote on, on this matter.
Would that include the county commission and the state?
Sure, I'll, I'll play it.
All, all parties involved, I second that motion. Any, any further discussion? No, we did, no, we, uh.
Yeah, I, I guess in essence it would be to pull it and ask that it be tabled until we have a chance.
It's not, it's not on consent, it's under unfinished business. So when we get to the item on.
Yeah, we'll, we'll. We'll, we'll, I was saying, I say, if you.
You said mine.
Okay. Alright, so, thank you.
Thank you.
There's two more reports and we're done with reports, Mr. Chairman. We have Annie Glass here, Principal at Mount Carmel Elementary School to give an annual psych outcome and achievement goals, as well as Sherri Price, Principal at Churchill Elementary.
Hi, I'm Annie Glass from Mount Carmel Elementary School. And I have quite the crowd here supporting us here at Mount Carmel. We have a fantastic staff and wonderful students, so we have a lot here to support us tonight. And our enrollment is, it's a K four, pre-K, K four school. And it's two hundred and forty-seven in K four and pre-K, there are thirty-five students. We are ninety-one point eight percent white, thirty-eight point three percent economically disadvantaged, twenty-two point seven percent students with disabilities. And we have twenty-five point six certified employees, twenty-one percent, twenty-one support staff. And we also now have our SRO, I didn't add them on the bottom of there, but we do have our wonderful new SRO that we're appreciative of. And we have the lowest chronically absent students last year at six point five percent. So we were the lowest in the district last year, we're proud of that. And we met the county goal in all of the periods except one last year. So we've had great attendance and excellent students. And this is our aims web scores. And this is for the spring, back in, we took this back in May. And then kindergarten, we had ninety-two point seven percent of our students that were on grade level. They, they, they hit the twenty-six percentile or above, so they were ready to roll. And we had four point nine percent of us in the tier two, and we had two point four percent in tier three. This is all in reading. And I won't read all those numbers to you, but as you can see, we have most of our students, the majority of our students are all reading on grade level. We were also, all of our teachers were given the level five status in aims web for their, for their achievement measure. This is math, very similar to the reading. Also, all students were level five schoolwide. We all got to put that in our TN compass for their evaluation. These are our TN ready scores for last year. We had fifty-eight point five percent, fifty-eight point five one percent proficient or advanced in reading. And that includes second and third, I mean, excuse me, second, third and fourth. And we were also the highest in the district in that by seventeen percent. We were very proud of our reading accomplishment last year. Fourth grade reading across the state was known as to be a low point, and that was a high point for us. So that was excellent. In math, we have forty-six point eight one percent proficient advancement. We are utilizing the new program that the board approved, NCASE. We utilize it daily in all of our lessons and activities throughout, after the week. We recently just took the NCASE assessment. And we have incorporated the NCASE assessment into our school goals. They are in our E Plan, and we use some aims web, but we have also second, third and fourth included in case as our goals. And this kind of, it's kind of, it's hard to see, I guess, but we have met most of our school goals. Our goals were set for the end of the school year, so we're gonna take the NCASE one more time. And we were hoping to meet those goals by the end of the year. But as you can see, we have met most of those goals already at the, the November benchmark. So we're very proud of our students and proud of our teachers for preparing them for the NCASE assessment. I was also told today that we scored very well in the district, so very proud of everyone. We're also working as a county to set goals for first grade fluency. We are monitoring that, I think some of y'all might have seen the dots that we had posted when we come to our principals meetings. When we put our dots up, they had an ad extra chart because we had so many students that were above the one hundred words per minute. The goal was forty words per minute back in October. We had fifty percent of our students that met that fluency goal. And we had seven of our students that were reading a hundred words a minute. One of our school goals was to incorporate indirect, explicit, multisensory, prescribed, prescribed way of teaching phonics to all students K two. We purchased the Orton Gillingham Phonics first. Our students are utilizing that in K one, two, so that they are all receiving the exact same instruction and it's flowing through the grade levels with them. We have seen a tremendous success. Here's a student here that is decoding there at the bottom. We have had tremendous success with this. We have students that were non-readers last year who are reading on grade level. We have some of our teachers who have worked tremendously to go on to, go to trainings. They have watched YouTube videos, they have gone to see other people use this program. And now people from the districts are coming to, to watch us use this program and some other schools are purchasing it as well. So this has been a great purchase with our Title I funds. And it has helped, I believe, us to meet our goals in our aims web as well as our NCASE. This is, another goal is to maintain chronic absenteeism. We wanted to be at least six point five percent, if not lower. In August, we were at three point nine eight percent. September, we had a little bit of an increase at seven point five oh. October, four point nine, and then now November, four point eight two, eight two. So we're maintaining our chronic absenteeism and we've got it a little bit lower back this month. Some strengths of our school is parent engagement. We have the most fantastic parents you'll ever meet. They wanna be there all the time. Yesterday, they were there with their sewing machines and sewing shirts for the parade. They were putting up our Christmas tree. They come and read with our students. They're there all the time. They are beating our doors down to be with our students and, and work with, with us and work with anything that our teachers want, so they're fantastic. You see, some of them are reading to our kids, they're at math night at Good Lion. They're just coming in, there's a PTO at the ball festival, they're just here all the time. Community involvement, we have the fire department, we have public works. We've had the, we had one of our teacher's husbands come and teach the kids how to put up the flag and take it down. We had just a little bit of everything there as well. They're in and out all the time. We invite the community to come in the building and talk to us.
For.
Yes, yeah, yeah. They came for our AR kickoff and they did talk the kids. We also have implemented the school-wide behavior support. We went to training that Angela Jackson set up and with our school and several of the other schools. We always have had that at Mount Carmel, but we have pushed it a little more this year in our whole school, this dojo. It's an excellent way to communicate with parents and communicate with students with their behaviors, as well as positive things that they see going on through the school. They earn dojo points all the time. So up here you can see some of the kids, when they reach, reach certain goals, they get reward days. We have after-school clubs. We have a Spanish club that meets every Monday afternoon. We have a writing club. We're trying to encourage students to enjoy writing, not just for writing assessments, but just to enjoy writing in general. So we have a writing club that meets. We have Girl Scouts and we also have the Y M C A after-school program. So lots of things happen at Mount Carmel Elementary. And I think one of our biggest strengths is just our cohesive family unit as staff. So we are a family, just take care of each other. If anybody's struggling, we build each other up and we work towards our goals and do the best we can as well, cats. A few more strengths, our, our fantastic PTO that is very involved in every single day of our school, school lives. We have before-school tutoring now. We started with some Title I funds, so we wanted to boost our math scores. So students have the opportunity to go tutoring before school. We have a Wildcat newspaper, and if, if any of y'all wanna follow our Facebook page, you'll see that. It's posted yesterday of some of our terrific writers writing just about anything they wanna write about. And we have our own newspaper. We also have the Kingsport Literacy, Literacy Tutors. They come in multiple times a week and work with our struggling readers. We have America Reads that support us as well from ETSU. We have an accelerated reader program that we utilize at all times throughout the school year. And we have school-wide goal setting for students as early as pre-K. They all have a goal-setting notebook that they work on every single day. They put in their attendance, they put in their reading goals, their writing goals, and sometimes just a goal in life. So I know my own daughter's is to, you know, master her back tuck, so that's a goal that she has in hers. But everybody has some for school and some for out of school, cause we wanna talk about the whole topic, not just their academics. But I feel, our greatest strength is our students. And we have some students here today that wanna tell you how great Mount Carmel Elementary School is. So if you students will come on up here, I'm gonna let you. Alright, I'm gonna let Ms. Sophia start. Can you start for us? You can talk in the back microphone right there. Can you get up there?
Good evening. My name is Sophia Porter and I am a third grader at Mount Carmel Elementary. Our school is the best all around. It has many things to offer students. Reading is one of my favorite things to do and I love trying to double and even triple my AR goal. My goal for this nine weeks is thirty points and I'm already at forty-nine. Mount Carmel Elementary offers many programs online to help us learn and be successful. My favorite is reading plus Ed Reflex. These programs help us to improve our reading and math skills. We also have different clubs for students to be a part of. We have a side language club, writing club, and Spanish club, and even Girl Scouts. The teachers and staff are fantastic and really love and care about us. I love our school because it helps us get prepared for our life, now and later. Thank you.
My name is Smilly. I like teachers, I love reading and going on field trips. I love filling out super attendance because we get to do special things like Project Holiday, Four Day, and eat lunch in the classroom.
My name is Trey and I'm a student at MCES. There are many things I love about being a Wildcat, but the thing I love most is reading. I love reading because I can do a pumpkin book project and book club. What I do for, what I did for the pumpkin book project was fly guy. Book club is where we read with Ms. Short and teachers. Also, I love reading because we can go on an AR mystery trip if we meet our AR goal. We went to Camp Hope and my favorite was riding the horses. Honestly, I love reading because we have special guest readers come. My mom played my great-grandfather's homemade dollsman. These are the things I like about reading at MCES. Go Wildcats!
My name is Ryder Ryan in fourth grade. One thing I like about this school is my teachers. I learned they worked and how to speak and how to think. I learned, I also learned about multiplication and division. I enjoy historical facts from fiction and non-fiction books. My teachers played, gave lessons and encouraged me to try my best. And they gave me time if I wasn't finished with problems, with my work. I really adore the teachers at this school.
My name is Michael, I mean, Michael Allen Nunnery in the kindergarten. My teachers are great, our principal's awesome, everyone's nice, kind and churchy spec. Like, we have lots of stuff that makes our life fun, like the computers, board games, Chromebooks, like the different alarm stations. I love my school.
My name is Blakee and I love my school because my, my teachers have the best skills ever. And when I grow up, I'm gonna be five.
Is that everybody?
Yeah.
Got a couple more.
Oops, sorry, second I messed up.
Big smiles.
Sorry, I had to go from video to regular. Thanks. Okay, thanks. Thank you.
When I grow up, I'm gonna be five, I'll say. Feel like I'm five right now. And I'm Sherri Price, the principal at Churchill Intermediate School, and this is my sister principal, Lindsay Hudson. I'm very excited to have her this year because she came from that awesome school, Mount Carmel. And she has given us so many ideas and we do love the parents and the students and the support that we get from that community. So let us share with you very quickly, I know we had a long evening, but I want to share with you some of the great things going on at Churchill. This is our school. We have around three hundred eighty-six students currently enrolled. Ninety-four percent of them are white, thirty-six point eight are economically disadvantaged, and fourteen point two percent are students with disabilities. We have thirty certified staff and fourteen support staff. Our attendance last year was ninety-four point nine nine percent, which is one hundredth of a percent, Greg Sturgill. I think we could have stretched that. Our goal was ninety-five, but we almost made it last year. This year, we are ahead of our goal. We have been every month so far, so we are doing good with our attendance. Last year, one of our difficulties, though, we were appointed as a focus school this year. And focus schools are appointed by the state of Tennessee if you are low in any particular subgroup. Our subgroup that struggled a bit last year were the economically disadvantaged. And you can see here with our chronically absent. Chronically absent means that a student has missed at least ten percent of their school year. So a typical one hundred eighty days, they would have missed eighteen. If they were there thirty days, then they can miss three days and be chronically absent if they moved in and out of their school. So last year, nine point seven percent of all of our students were chronically absent. But the economically disadvantaged were at twenty point four. But look at the excused absences. Ninety-nine point four of those students, I mean, percent of those, had excused absences, either by doctors or by parent excuses. Our current situation for all students, we have seven point six three, which is meeting our goal. And ten point four, we've cut that in half for economically disadvantaged. We are very proud and I'll tell you a few of the things that we've done to put that into place. This is a whole lot of information that pretty much tells you things before the slide, but it does show you that our goal was ninety-five percent for this year. We are meeting the goal for all students. Our chronically absent goal, we want it to take down to nine point one. That's based on the AMOs for the state. And so currently, we are at seven point six three. Our economically disadvantaged AMO target is not ten point one, and we are currently at ten point four. So we are doing very well with that. Our personnel attendance, we've been a little bit disappointed with, but all of those are pretty much accounted for. We've had some teachers who have had some illnesses and been off for extended absences. So those are accounted for and hopefully, we're all gonna get better. We're all just kind of getting old and having things to deal with, so we're doing the best we can. But some of the things that we're doing for attendance at Churchill. One of the things Mr. Sturgill put into place was the September rewards and incentives. This student, Marcus, won overall for the county, the poster contest. His poster was chosen and it has been put up in all the schools in Hawkins County. We're really proud of him. And then every week, we also give prizes for students who, if they've been there all week, we regularly pull their names out. If they've been there all week, they get rewards and we put them out on Facebook and all that stuff. This is Lindsay and I at our best. This is the real me. But this is some of the rewards that we do at the A-School. We had the Rock the Teacher Day. We had lots of things where we just promote those students who are good with behavior, attendance, things like that. And then we did have class rewards for attendance where our students earn a slice, a fake slice of pizza every week if their attendance is good in their classrooms. And then once the pizza pan is completed, they get their whole pizza, the real thing. And those are some things that we put into place. But I think our biggest thing for our buck has been following Mount Carmel's lead with the Leader in Me program. We are still learning and we are still stealing ideas from them and other schools who are putting that and Ron Clark Academy, the practices from them. We're taking a lot of those ideas. Our students this year have really stepped up with school jobs. They do the announcements. In the morning, you will find the office full of students. And most of them, I will admit, are the feisty little boys that stay in trouble. But I, you know, they come in and instead of going to the gym and that kind of thing, they come in my office and they're like, what can I do this class? What can I do? And so they're going out and holding the door for people and just saying good morning or just anything, putting up the flag. And it's giving a sense of ownership for kids to want to be there and they're doing a really good job. The teachers have attended conferences, How to Serve the Whole Child. That's a big incentive in the state of Tennessee right now. And we also had the Flu Shop Clinic at our school. We have a care closet that has been sponsored by the Churchill. Rootin', thank you, that's what she's here for. Tell me that's where it's meant to go. So, but the care closet, they really helped with that. We have shampoo, deodorant. We have clothes that have been donated, just the extra things that sometimes students don't want to come to school because they don't smell good or their clothes don't, or, you know, things like that. So we want to help these children and encourage them with the things that they're needing. And then we're doing a lot of restorative discipline strategies where, you know, we're talking with the students and helping them learn the practices of good behavior rather than just the consequences and punishment always. Looking into our achievement data and we're kind of excited about where we are at this point. We're looking at our TCAC scores last year in fifth grade ELA. Our students that are current in fifth grade, this would have been their percentage in fourth grade. They scored, thirty-nine percent of them were proficient or advanced, so that's what they came in with. We gave a test at the beginning of the year for fifth grade. Of course, they hadn't had the material yet, so they did not score very well, but it was a cumulative test of what they should know at the end of the year. Just in the past two weeks, we've given the I-Ready test. I-Ready is a program that was purchased through Title I funds and is very much aligned to the TCAC test. And at this point, it's looking like thirty-six percent of our students are already on track to be proficient and advanced. And then the case assessment, which is purchased by the county, it sounds like a whole lot of testing and I'll just tell you, it is. But right now, we don't know where we're gonna get our biggest bangs in the buck and we're gonna find out this year where these line. So, but our case assessment also shows that we're all, you know, over halfway there to being where we need to be at the end of the year. Our sixth grade ELA is looking really good. Their goal is thirty-nine percent to have those same students or more on track. The benchmark, of course, is lower. And then I-Ready is showing that more than that are already on track to be proficient at the end of the year. The case assessment is showing a little bit lower. And to be honest, what we're looking at is the alignment and we'll be looking at that next year to see what does align and what we should go off to kind of look at that. We've used a lot of our action plans to purchase instructional materials that are aligned, making sure we're using text that is appropriate for sixth graders and higher. We do collaboration weekly with the teachers and they come together. They're learning a lot of new technology and practices. And what does that look like? Well, these are our kids and what they're doing. But you're gonna come into Churchill Intermediate and my mom subs a lot and she, she's like, Sherri, they're not quiet when you come in the room. Kind of freaks her out a little bit, she's seventy-six. But this is what you see when you come in the room. They may be debating, they're talking, they're down on the floor. And this is Alexandra Brown. She came in second place in the county spelling bee. We're very proud of her. We're looking at math scores the same way. Fifth grade math, we're on track to be where we need to be at the end of the year. Sixth grade math, even higher in the case and the I-Ready, so we're excited about those. And again, the math improvement, we're looking at using a lot more manipulatives for our students. They're using Versatiles. These are all things purchased through Title I and we're very thankful for those resources. The difference between the scores that you just saw, all of that was grade level for fifth and sixth grade. The AIMS Web Data tells us if these students have the basic skills for reading and math. And so these are based on just the, can they read, their fluency? Or do they know the basic operations, multiplication, addition, that type of thing? And last year, at the end of the year, eighty-eight percent of our students were on grade level in reading. And eighty-nine percent of our students were on grade level for those basic skills in math. Some of the interventions that we are doing, we have data tracking for all students. And we have intervention every day for up to one hour and fifteen minutes. We do have tutoring before and after school in reading and math. And I did not put it in here, but we have, we have created this year the data notebooks for every child. And every child does set their own goals at the beginning of every week in reading, math, and also those personal goals as well. And then one of our goals, of course, being a focus school, we're really concentrating on the economically disadvantaged students and their families. And we are hoping to give them their, whatever it is that we need to get them there with their attendance and that type of thing. Our family and student engagement, we've had a really good turnout this year. Our back-to-school bash, our classroom teacher and team events, and our reading night. We had a really good turnout of all the ones and a lot of the economically disadvantaged students and their families are coming, so we appreciate that. Family and student engagement, this is what it looks like too. It looks like chaos and we have a whole lot of fun. Actually, this one was our four feeder schools, Mount Carmel, Carter's Valley, Churchill, and it feeders Ben. And we had never done this before, but we had a mingling social event with two hundred students. And we let them all come out of the bleachers and go meet each other and they had to find somebody that had the same birthday as them or whatever, and that was a lot of fun. And then we had a storytelling event. I guess the thing that we're most proud of this year, though, I've said that I've gone back to my beginning years of teaching and that is, I came in just loving them. And you kind of lose focus sometimes with test scores and all that type of thing, but I, I do love students and I am loving this year. And with the Leader in Me, we have a morning meeting time every day where all the teachers are teaching the same social skills and behavior skills. They're building relationships. And we have just seen tremendous progress with our school. People have come in and said, Sherri, I don't know what you're doing different this year, but it's just a different environment. And our students feel like they have ownership in our school and we're really proud of that. Here's a morning meeting where they're getting together and just talking and discussing things. We also, as Mandy told you earlier, we were a recipient of five thousand dollars for the Second Chance Breakfast. And we have over one hundred fifty students now in addition to what we did have eating breakfast. So we're very proud of our cafeteria staff and our teachers and everyone for implementing that. And if it's cool to eat breakfast in sixth grade, that's pretty good, right? So, we have clubs once a month. Here's our sign language club. We have a line dancing club. Students are allowed to do those on Friday afternoons before, you know, school is out, so they don't have to have a ride or anything. And they get to choose their interests. And then our teachers and some of their children and a lot of volunteers last summer have spent a lot of time just improving our environment and decorating our school. Along with student behavior, we do have the Behavior Support Team, which we started last year and it has only gotten better. Students who are struggling are provided mentors and they have check-in and check-out and we bring them in and just kind of treat them as our own and give them whatever it is that they need to support them in the classroom. The professional development, this is where it starts and Lindsay's gonna kill me for putting these pictures of us in here, but it starts with us. And the fact is, we only know what we know. And I have been at Churchill Intermediate School for ten years. I have been given lots of opportunities to go to conferences and other schools and network with other people. And I just can't stress how important that is because I only see what I see in my own building. So this year, we've done several book studies. We have gone to the LEED conference. Lindsay's going to the Pi Conference and different things. And when we come back, trust me, those things are being implemented and I want to show you how that is. Maybe on the next slide. There we go. Here's Mia Hyde for the First Tennessee Core Office and she did a workshop with her teachers. And they are wanting to work more and help those students who are struggling. And then this is what it looks like in the classroom. So we are bringing ideas and using them in classes. This is Mr. Anderson learning to use the virtual reality goggles and again, that flows over into our students. Here's our teachers at the beginning of the year doing some of the team-building activities, relationship building. And again, there they are out on the playground making that happen. Our school, right here is the core, you know, these guys work. We would never have enough time to pay all these people overtime. There's never a day that I come to Churchill Intermediate School at seven fifteen that someone's not beat me there. I have teachers there as early as six o'clock in the morning and I will tell you, there's probably somebody there tonight. They work really long hours and I'm just really proud of all the hard work that they're doing. And I appreciate you all giving me the opportunity to share this with you because they deserve the recognition. All right, thank you.
We'll take a five-minute recess.
Hour and a half in and we're not even on the agenda yet.
Slam me down, I know there's enough stuff.
You just went live.
You're seen by five people.
They're taking a five-minute break right now.
Go.
Wish I could get it.
Seven thirty right now, so hopefully it'll be over by the middle. I'll see, I'll see where I can. I know she is. I am too, I'm not telling you anymore, so. But I'll, I'll let her tell her, I will bring her something. I know she was. Yeah, she just, like I said, she's just staying. But I'll be, I'll be, I'll let Cheryl and Mason's over and I'll be helping soon as I can. Well, right, it started at six o'clock, and right now, it's seven thirty, and I'm gonna take a break.
How you doing?
Doing great, sir, how about you?
I'm doing well.
Oh, you guys got any good scoops?
Not very many, while I'm thinking about it. So you have the, the, Carol Williams.
Yeah.
So I was contacting him before, I have his email, two emails actually, and his phone number that I talked to him last time. But I cannot get a hold of him.
Yeah, he's really hard to get a hold of. The best way is to email him questions and have him email you back, but no, I just looked up and heard that he was here, that's how I got on my.
Okay, so I talked to him, like, he emailed back like that.
Yeah, well. He's one of those, one of those eccentric, eccentric genius guys, you know? So you just gotta get lucky sometimes.
So you usually?
Well, now, before the education meeting, back to order. I need a break, uh, now we're to the uh, director's school report, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Hicks. We're uh, we're moving on to the consent agenda, um, but before I knew it, I did wanna make a mention of the policy committee. Uh, we know that it was a will of the board to uh, get policies before the board so that they could review those, especially those that are being affected by legislation that's being passed. As we look toward January, there are no doubt new laws coming down. I wanna make sure that the board and uh, our staff do not get behind on those revisions to keep us consistent uh, in practice with the, with the law that's out there. We have currently three to four that are um, waiting to be looked at and edited and uh, sent back to us from the policy committee. I did wanna make a public comment uh, in support of Mr. Hicks' idea to uh, possibly look at the board policy and make it more general in nature and leave the specific actions required by staff to remain consistent with those policies uh, up to the proceeding and of the administrative procedures. So I think that that's a great idea, a great focus to move forward with. But I do wanna encourage the board, if at all possible, uh, those of you that will serve on the uh, policy committee team, uh, that we set those dates beginning in January and have a number of dates on the books, uh, just in case we do need them so that we don't get backlog on possible uh, policy coming up towards the end of the year. And uh, Chris Hicks, if you could give us some dates to give, if that would be possible? Thirty, thirty-one. If, if it's okay with you, I'll, I'll contact you, work, uh, work with Jennifer, and get some dates available, and we'll get some on the books. Doesn't even have to meet that many times, but at least we'll have the dates that are.
I think it's a good idea.
Consent agenda is all yours.
Uh, consent agenda, it's before the board for approval for consent agenda A one through six.
I got a question too.
Please.
Uh, first one is, I just was just curious why number two was put where it is rather than back there with all the rest of the trips and flips and everything else?
Yeah.
Well, we, we don't have students and or staff selected, that's just a, that's just an expense that we want to approve up to that amount, the dollar amount per student, um, it's, it's not specific. I think the reason it was moved up is because it does not have, it's not ready to go, so to speak, as the other trips are uh, ready to go. That's the only explanation I have, it's, it's not an attempt to put it out of order or anything, it's just we haven't identified staff for students to participate in that, in that uh, scope conference in Murfreesboro. But overall, dollar amount won't change, it's just we don't have specific students or, and or staff selected at this point. We just want approval to extend that so that we can get that group put together and go.
I guess the other part of that question is, is the map, the uh, I assume that that fifty dollars per meal is in excess of whatever the rest of it costs, right?
Correct.
Because I mean, you know, didn't give us a specific amount, that's what that's going to be.
I can give us, I can give a specific, but again, we don't have staff and students outlined, so we don't, we don't have a dollar amount. It is something that, that uh, we participate in. Uh, if the board so desires, I can get that specific and get it rolled out to you, in worst case scenario, because we're looking at uh, March. Uh, we could bring that back in January with specifics, but I don't know, given the holiday times and the, and the amount of time between now and then that we do have, I'm not sure that we would have everybody identified at that point.
Well, I guess uh, approval to allow up to six students and two chaperones to attend the twenty-twenty scope conference in Murfreesboro, Tennessee on March tenth, twenty-twenty, and to pay registration, hotel rooms, provide transportation, and to give each student and ch- and chaperone fifty dollars for meals.
Correct.
And that's us paying the hotel rooms, pay the bus driver, or pay mileage for someone to drive. Uh, I don't, I don't understand the cost associated with that, if, if we have a dollar amount, I think we.
Wouldn't you go over to the, to the, the uh, explanation sheet or whatever it was? It says student registration fee sixty dollars, cost cover of breakfast, lunch, information, package, group, book. Photographs and file reports, chaperone fee sixty dollars, cost cover of breakfast, lunch, and information package. So, I mean, that's what's confusing to me, um, is uh, what that total cost is, because the numbers don't add up.
Well, the student registration fee is sixty dollars per student, the chaperone, uh, registration fee is sixty dollars there per chaperone, and again, it depends, it depends on if we get all six students and two chaperones to extend, but that, to attend, but that gives you a breakdown. So student registration fee would be six students times a sixty, and then two chaperones times, times a sixteen. Uh, and then we're looking at uh, uh, militer reimbursements for chaperone vehicles, um, that are transporting students, so on and so forth. But again, if, if it's a board desire to have specific numbers, um, I can, I can try to get those in order for uh, January. But again, the, the thought was that if you could approve that trip as outlined, worst case scenario, six at sixty and two at fif- at sixteen plus mileage reimbursement, that's roughly what you'd be looking at if we, if we took this uh, full crew.
And that would be approximately? Thousand dollars?
Probably, probably not exceed a thousand dollars by the time you do the mileage.
Yeah.
Motion to approve consent agenda one through six.
You have a motion?
Would you please, go ahead, you have a motion and a second, we can still discuss.
Yep, got a motion, we got a second, any further discussion?
Now, number four. Mr. Chairman, I think on the consent agenda, we have to remove it from consent agenda at once we discuss. No, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't propose to do that yet. But my motion's in. To approve, we have to vote on it. I understand it had to be pulled prior to the motion, if that's what we.
Vote. If that's what we want to vote. Or, or somebody can amend or table a motion. There's a motion?
Not now. With approval of the consent agenda, you can't. Motion was to approve it, less to vote on it.
But there's discussion.
Correct, yes. Even made a motion and a second, and we're gonna vote to discuss.
Good. Call Rob, Mr. Chairman.
Tom.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Craig.
Yes.
Pete.
No.
Larkin.
Yes.
Shane. Susan. Rachel.
Yes.
On the border, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, item four is violation of a policy, this is for your general information, but that's okay, go ahead. But I would like to see at some point Thomas, as a board, take to our own defense, uh, some of the funds that we spend for a lot of out-of-state, over-the-night stuff. Because I think that we, considering our state report guards, we're not doing so hot. So, I don't know how well that's, figures in what we're trying to do in educating our children. And uh, that's just, uh.
What is number four?
Well, number, I, number four is a violation of our, of our board policy.
Board meetings?
Yeah, it's a violation of our board, you can't change board meetings that are not on holiday. And you're starting to try to change it. There, the, our policy says that our board meetings will be on the first third of the month. That's what it say. And the only, and the only changes that can be made is if they fall on legal holiday. Well, that's what the policy says, I don't care what you disagree with or not. All right, here's the policy.
Unless the board agrees to a different date.
No, that's not in this policy.
The board, the board can't take action to.
We have to suspend the policy.
Well, we didn't.
You can't, there's nothing in this policy that says that we can change the dates. Nothing.
Well, if we're, if we're discussing point order, we should not be discussing item four after a vote.
Any more?
I stand corrected.
Uh, that brings us to item B, approval of purchases over five thousand dollars. It's such a court if we do this individually or in use.
I have a question, what?
Yes.
On number four, and I'm thinking it's probably against the title. It's got that the license is twenty-three, twenty-seven, but it doesn't add up to seventeen, one, sixty-three. So I'm assuming along the line of number two, it's twenty-five, twenty-seven for license, is that correct? Does that be correct?
Which one are you looking at there?
On um, number, line four, number four. Under that seventeen thousand, nineteen, sixty-three dollars, it has to be twenty-five, twenty-seven, instead of twenty-three, twenty-seven. Okay, before, double check and recheck.
So it should be, that should read twenty-five, twenty-seven on line four, correct?
Yes. Thank you.
Is that what you have?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have any?
Yes.
Number eight, there's a top over there too, it should be twenty-one thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars.
I did, I emailed that out yesterday, is that correct?
I was counting wrong, too.
Two minutes. Can you write a got any, anything else for item B one through eight?
Chairman, I move to approve items B one through eight, purchases over five thousand dollars. Would you make any changes? Would you change this, that's noted?
Thank you. We have a motion.
Okay.
We have a second, any further discussion? With none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes. That brings us to unfinished business, uh, we are uh, taping the train service agreement till next month.
Chairman, can, can I, can I make a recommendation and a request at the same time on that particular item? Uh, is it possible that the facilities committee could meet prior to our next board meeting and hear from the representatives from train and Excel lighting? I, I, I just had a lot of questions.
No, uh, no, I feel like that we've had meetings before, we've had meetings before, and I think that we just need to hear it as an entire board.
We all could hear that at a workshop, didn't we? I had it heard.
Right. I have. So.
But we didn't speak to the train representative, did we?
No, we got all our information from our staff.
So, since this is a large budget item, I would like to ask a few questions, and I might request a committee meeting to, to do that.
I don't see why we couldn't leave that in the meeting instead of having another committee. Cause when was we had?
January seventh, uh, we're meeting four-thirty with A C E A.
No, I'm running with two meetings on the same day. Now, if we're the structure needs to do that, you can do that, but I'm not gonna propose two meetings on the same day.
I'm proposing that we meet at five-thirty on that day, since all of us are here, we would have to make another trip to Rogersville. And uh, if, if the train and the Excel people be here to present their proposals.
Is, is the, is the question, uh, Mr. Larkin, is the question or the concern that uh, that you would have questions relative to train and Excel energy representatives, that that would be beneficial to hear?
Yes.
I don't see why would, what questions couldn't be answered in a public meeting instead of getting this all back together.
You're, you're talking about at the ninth, we're just having here at the ninth board meeting?
Yes.
So have the representatives from train and Excel?
Just like we had previously planned. We scheduled that way for two other meetings, but I felt like with not having all board members present on such a large purchase, I didn't want to continue without, the, the last time we tabled that we had only four board members here, and tonight, Debbie's missing. Our last meeting, this will be the third time it's been tabled, uh, we all still had a lot of questions. So, and we didn't have the train representative here. So I think that such a large purchase, uh, I just feel like we need to do it in public meeting.
Mr. Christian, I will be here on the night because I have the orientation for the board members in nation. So, I don't know if I can reschedule that.
No. Well, I, I, I'm still of the opinion to. Well, I, I, I'm still of the opinion to just.
I trust you.
Have you been to the committee workshop? And even if you did come to the workshop, you're not going to be at the meeting tonight?
Is it one of the situations where she has to be work or?
No, she could, she could, yeah. Yeah.
Doesn't it fit the criteria she's asked, that she can participate by?
Yeah, we'd have to.
Like twenty something?
We'd have to identify that it's, it's really her, and that she's in a position where she can hear the entire meeting, but, but if, if the electronics is set up, and you do have that flexibility to conduct the meeting for one, that's at an excusable event, uh, to participate personally.
And Jennifer just informed me that the first meeting down there on Thursday night is until seven o'clock, seven fifteen.
We'll write you an excuse for that, all right?
I think I need it.
Well, I, I'll tell you what, we can continue that discussion on the committee meeting later, but as of now, the train A and B will be tabled.
Are you disapproving the committee meeting?
Yes.
Chair has informed you to do that?
Two-thirds of the board can call for a committee meeting. I'm not mistaken.
I'm not moving that back.
I think it's two-thirds.
All of the board action is not a majority.
Yeah. Like I say, if the board wants to do that, that's fine, but I just don't see the need for it. Uh, I think any questions we have can be asked in a public meeting. Just like we previously have been planning to do the last three meetings.
Will you have confirmation that the representatives will be here at that meeting?
I'm sure that.
I can, I can make sure that they're here, and if not, I can let, uh, Chairman Christian know in advance and we can, if we be tabled another month.
And if, and I, I won't be this much of a stickler, if they can't be here all night, then we'll schedule committee meeting. Well, look at scheduling a committee meeting.
Well, if, if it pleases the board, then what I'll do is I'll put a Jennifer and I can look at the, the agenda for the January meeting and make sure that we have a skeletal agenda, so to speak, so that we have ample time for train and Excel to do the presentation and or answer questions.
Yes.
That, that may include, uh, that may, uh, entail moving principal presentations, uh, currently scheduled for January and putting them off and bouncing them back for a year. Otherwise, we would be here all night.
Okay. So, uh, A and B will be tabled, and that brings us.
Already tabled.
Yeah.
Already tabled.
That brings us to unfinished business.
Now to twenty percent. I started at a hundred.
Uh, unfinished business. Approval of train service agreement for building automation system in Cherokee High School. That's the same thing we're talking about.
Do you have an updated CTE that this recommends that those are tabled, that you, you would have to take action to the board to table those two items?
Under unfinished business. I'll make the motion that we table these items.
I'll say it.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further debate? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One opposed, motion basing. Item C, the Clinch School, well.
I think my directions on that, unless you want to make a motion first and discuss, but my directions on that were to make a proposal for the commission uh, to see if there was possibly any joint interest, uh, from representatives from the Clinch area to possibly come up with a permanent solution for water, water supply for the Clinch area.
Yes, that mirrors my previous motion, so.
Yes, the Clark's.
Correct.
Please say it.
Thank you. Any further debate on that? If not.
That's to talk to the county commissioner, isn't it, Mr. Hicks?
Yes. So we have a motion, we have a second?
No, for. Can I ask for clarification during discussion? Yes, very nice. I, I just wanted to make sure that the note reflect that does Mr. Larkin's motion, it could have been perceived that it was mine, that's not the case, I'm not allowed to make a motion, but I just wanted to clarify that, uh.
It was my motion.
I, I am asking, I am asking the commission if there's any interest at this point in teaming with the board of education and sharing the cost initially of running permanent water supply to the Clinch school.
As well as other interest parties.
Okay. In that case, including water districts on.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and then I say, some no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion basing. Uh, board member compensation, Mr. Hicks.
I did find, uh, that last meeting you asked, uh, several board members asked if I could find clarification, um, any clarification regarding the payment for meetings, and I did find a nineteen ninety-seven action of, of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners in regular session, uh, twenty-seventh day of January nineteen ninety-seven that states whereas Hawkins County Board of Education requests the salary paid to each board member for each regular meeting, uh, be increased to a hundred dollars and fifty for a committee meeting, which is equal to the amount paid to members of Hawkins County Board of Commissioners. Uh, one of the comments that was made at last board meeting was that we wanted to make sure that we were equitable and, and consistent with the commissioners. Uh, this is the only documentation I could find regarding payment for committee and or board meetings. Uh, so if we want to stay equitable with the commissioners, uh, we need to avoid, uh, holding more than one committee meeting per night. Uh, I would entertain the, the, the fact that since we did so a couple of months ago, that the board members be paid per those meetings, and that in the future, we do not pay, uh, we do not schedule more than one committee meeting per day. If that makes sense?
Yes. We, we need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion, and we got a second.
Sounds like I made a motion again, and that's not the case.
Well, I'm going to ask Miss Jennifer to read it back.
I don't do that.
Hawkins County Board of, uh, Board of Education agrees to the fifty-dollar amount for committee meeting and will not attend more than one committee meeting per day. Due to the attendance of two committee meetings in previous months, that will be paid per meeting, um, for that particular instance. And that was in October, I believe.
That's pretty good motion, okay.
Well, I, I make a motion that we stay in line with the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners.
And, and that is consistent, yes.
And that is.
Yeah. We got a motion. Got a second, any further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One opposed. New business, adjusted bus driver salary scale for retired employees.
Thank you, I sent this out via email once the agenda was posted. We are looking at, uh, an increase of about sixteen thousand dollars to meet the current, uh, allowances with TCRS, the retirement entity for the state of Tennessee. Uh, they allow for sixty-three percent, moving up to eighty percent on the graduated scale for, uh, retired employees to return as bus drivers. And those are for dual, dual-position bus drivers, you have a, a, a recommended salary schedule on that, and then you also have a recommended salary schedule for retired bus drivers returning to work as a substitute driver. Both of those show that there are graduated scales starting at sixty-three percent, talking out of eighty-point-four-one of their, um, of their, their final, um, salary while they were working prior to retirement. So we do recommend that we bump this to that, uh, increased pay scale to assist and greatly, uh, assist Roy Benavides, uh, transportation director in securing much-needed substitute drivers, uh, from this field of retirees. On the following sheet, you'll see that the increase is roughly three thousand dollars per, uh, full-time driver that we have listed there, with the exception of the second one, uh, who is a, a part-time substitute, there's an increase of about two thousand. This would roughly cost us year-to-date difference of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Check your daughter out now. You're the second.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? If none, all opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion basing. Is there any other business before this fourth? Our next meeting will be January the ninth, six p.m. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm dealing with overnight field, overnight and out-of-state field trips volunteer high school. I make a motion to approve, I have a second. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I asked a question here at the end of the meeting, um, in response to Mr. Hicks' question on item four for the dates. We do not have to nail down those. If there's a problem with that, I will review one point four zero zero and run it by Mr. Phillips, and then he can take back to the board if there's an issue with that. And, and I will go on record, if, if that is not the case, that if you have the ability to change those dates, um, then we, we will defer to what Mr. Hicks stated, and we will bring those dates to the board for, for correction.
Okay, thank you. Word adjourned.
Go bearers.
Who's winning?
I don't know if it's even started yet.
It ain't started yet.